Alright guys, Levi Trumble here. About to walk into this Huntington Township, Pennsylvania, meeting. Do some coverage of what a public meeting is like here. Marie, wow, this is a packed house.
I told you.
You're doing good, good to see you. Okay. What, what is the specialty of what's happening tonight?
There's a proposed baseball field.
Oh, okay. Do they hand out like written agendas?
Yes.
Okay. Interesting. Thank you. Do I get a chair from right here?
Yeah.
How does this work?
Wayne will get one for you.
Oh, thank you. That, that's Wayne right there?
No, um, yeah.
Right there?
Oh, thank you. He's starting to record.
Is he starting to record?
He's starting to record.
Oh, okay, great. Where do, um, public speakers give comment?
From your seat.
From your seat?
Yeah. You could stand up.
Got you. Thank you, sir, I appreciate you. Good man, appreciate you. So do people around here, are they, what do they think of this whole situation where they outlawed?
I haven't talked to many people. Nobody attends the meetings. They're all hard for the zoning.
For the zoning, okay.
Yeah.
So I thought the seven o'clock was the town meeting. Is this a zoning thing?
No, no, it's part of that. They were supposed to make their decision on a zoning hearing.
Okay, sure.
And they seem to have changed somewhat.
Right.
They were supposed to make their decision.
Very interesting.
Yeah.
Okay. They haven't said anything to me so far.
That's our new camera up here, Osmo.
Really?
It'll be able to turn, he'll be able to turn it from your, from his phone.
Okay, I'm gonna stand up right behind that gentleman, I'm gonna film them. Not the people, I'm filming them up there.
Okay.
So. Are you guys familiar with the unconstitutional resolution they passed prohibiting recording devices prior to the start of a public meeting and its adobe public voting? Oh, that's why I'm here tonight. I'm from Frederick, Maryland. There's a lot of people, is it usually, it's not usually this? No. It was like, wow, this is crazy. Oh, no, you are definitely allowed to. But they tried to stop it with a resolution. But it doesn't trump the First Amendment, which is the Constitution, which is essentially the law of the land here in America. So, uh, I think they're revising that tonight. We'll see. I don't know. I come in peace, that's all I know. Like, that's why I was back there, I was like, no, no. Trying to film them, not, not the, I'm not here for the city, I'm here for them. You get what I mean? How'd you find out? Uh, Marie, do you guys know Marie?
No.
She's the one who, who does the hunting and township watch? God bless that woman. She's doing a great public service. But she tipped me off because I'm from Frederick and I have a, uh, channel that covers like zoning issue, not zoning issue, but civil.
Good evening, everybody, it's now seven o'clock.
Civil issues all over the country. I travel around and cover those.
Please join me as we pledge allegiance. Let's continue to fight for the United States of America. To continue to follow the principles of one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Have a moment of silence? Thank you. Okay, the first item of any public comment on the agenda items. Yes, ma'am. Can you say your name, please?
Sure. Is it easier when you stand up?
Yeah.
Okay. Sure. My name is Cole Weaver. I am owner of One Eighty South Ridge Road. I am, I just see the questions and concerns raised during the recent year's meeting about the future of our property. As a resident of Dillsburg, I purchased this land with the intent of preserving its heritage. Resisting the push for large scale developments to purchase the land. I'm deeply disappointed by the response from some community members who felt very unsupportive of the dreams my family and I have for this property. This farm is not just land us, it's our children's legacy and the culmination of the hard work my husband and I have put into providing them a promising future. Many concerns were expressed about the potential for commercial development. I want to ensure you that our intention is not to bring in warehouses or solar fields as some have feared. We choose to invest in this land to prevent such development. Our visions align with preserving the small town atmosphere we all cherish. My children, who are connected to this land as any of you are, that you all own, would not compromise the community's essence that we all love. Regarding the proposed rezoning of the hundred and four acres to commercial, the decision stems from the guidance of the Adams County Tax Office Greenery Program. The partial rezoning is not viable as it would require the property to remain undeveloped for seven years. We are aware of the tax implications and are prepared to shoulder them for the sake of this project and its future benefits. Some have raised concern about property values, but we believe the proposed ball fields will not negatively impact property values. Especially since many properties are already zoned commercial at the other end of the road. On the contrary, these fields can become a valuable community asset encouraging local engagement and activities. Security measures will be robust, helping to curb unauthorized activity on the property. Regarding noise and traffic, we are committed to minimizing any disturbance. There will be no loud P A systems and we are working with local authorities and P S P to address speeding concerns already on South Ridge Road. My family and I will be personally involved in overseeing the site during tournaments, ensuring all rules and guidelines are respected. We aim to create a value where, a venue where local teams, including many of your children and grandchildren and players in the room, can play without having to travel long distances, fostering a sense of community and togetherness. In conclusion, it saddens me to see the communities hesitant towards a project designed, designed to support and nurture our youth. Many players who will benefit from these facilities are members of your very own community. I urge you to consider the positive impact this project will have on our children and to embrace the opportunity to watch them grow and thrive in your own backyard.
Any other public comment? Yes?
I'd like to speak on the fire.
Please say your name, please.
Marie Gange.
Thank you.
Uh, I'd like to speak on the fire company report. Last month I discussed the deficiencies in their compliance audit that they had filed back in 2021. And a week before the July eleventh meeting, I had called Mike Hoover to confirm that, um, to see if there was any change in whether they had sent in the appropriate information so that they could have that one item removed from non-compliance. So, uh, I didn't receive a call until the following Monday after the Thursday, July eleventh meeting. He indicated that, uh, he had to wait for someone to come back from vacation, that I think it's the actual person who does the actual audit. So I found out that they have complied with that one item, which was the one that possibly the York Springs Relief Fund would not receive their state funding if they had not corrected that. Uh, the second thing is, I noticed a change on the agendas. Uh, why are the, I noticed that the right to no requests are missing. Is there a reason for that or was it just forgotten?
It was just the decision to shorten the agendas.
Why does that not discuss at a public meeting? What is the reason for that? Is it, it's less transparency? Does someone have an aversion to transparency in the township?
They're not required to be on an agenda.
I know you're not required, but for the past three years that I've been attending, those are on there.
No, they're not.
Okay, then I will have to be, I guess, submitting a right to no request to find out what you've received every month. Thank you.
Any other public comment, sir?
My name is Randy Day. I do not live in the township, I do live in Bermudian Springs. My son, Jackson Day, is a twelve year kid on the Braves organization. And we've come, we, we started this organization about four years ago. I've been part of this organization since the, the get go. We started this sport ahead of the baseball. And in this area, yes, there is baseball fields in this area, but I don't know if your kids have ever played on any of these fields around this, this area, but they're, they're owned by local rec organizations. And the local, there's nothing wrong with the local rec. But we came here looking for competitive baseball. And we are in this area, we, we've lived in this area for thirteen years now. And this organization is a great organization. It's not about, it's not about Jay Weaver making money on baseball fields. It is about providing these, these young boys and girls softball and baseball, an opportunity to play somewhere, to play on the nice field, not travel to Reading or not travel to wherever, Newville. This is an opportunity for these guys to stay local and give them a good place to play. And that's all I'm asking, is listen to these guys, give them an opportunity. Thank you.
Yes?
So I have a couple of questions. Mrs. Weaver, you stated that you can't take a section out because the other piece has to stay, um, in the green for seven years, correct?
Correct.
So if you're only looking to put four ball fields in like was stated at the last meeting by your husband, then what does it matter if the other piece of, the other, the rest of the land stays in paint green for seven years?
Because then we would have to put the ball fields, it would get re-zoned, the board would approve it, and then it would sit vacant for seven years. So what would be then the point of doing all of this if we then have to leave that land sitting for seven years?
Because your husband said.
If we only pull out the twenty-five acres.
Because your husband said last meeting that the auction was off the table and the only thing that he was focusing on was the ball fields. That was said, it's in the minutes, that's what he said.
I believe his words were that he would be willing to take it off the table if that's what the supervisors deemed, but I don't believe it was ever tabled.
Okay, well, you see the, you see the problem there with this. In regards to this gentleman's, in regards to this gentleman's call number. If we're looking for a good ball field to practice on, my son's birthday baseball, and we had no practice field either. So you know, we did, we had land on our property right next to our house that I paid to have leveled and put a baseball field in, right next to our house. And that is where my little league team and my kids and my travel team practiced for years. You don't need to do that on, on a hundred and four acres. If you're looking for a good place to practice and if you are a member of Bermudian Springs and your children attend school there, if more than fifty percent of the players want to use Bermudian's fields, you can do that. The high schools, because I, I know that for a fact too. So, you, you're, you're.
So, so you, you did what you wanted to do on your land, did you not? Did you not?
Your, your.
And I believe that comment was being.
Okay, hang on, everybody, hang on. One person talking at a time and you have, we have comments, we're not going to get into debate back and forth yet. If you have a comment, anybody can say a comment, but let's not argue back and forth.
Furthermore.
I didn't catch your name.
Chris Miller. Furthermore. You all know that we have a, a piece of property that's up for sale right now, that is, has been approved as a sports complex. You all know that because we fought for that for years. So if you approve this, then you're putting another sports complex because that's what it's gonna be. Because if none of you were here last week heard him say football fields too, this is not just about baseball. This is going to be a sports complex. So you are going to have four miles apart on opposite ends of the county or the township, two sports complexes. Because you don't know who's buying my piece of property. You don't know if it's gonna be a manufacturing, you don't know if it's gonna be a baseball. You, you don't know. So, let's, let's just be honest about what's really happening. And you can't say that it's not about money because I know what you may call for tournaments.
Okay. Any other public comment, sir?
I'm Kevin Solable, I'm speaking on behalf of Colby Bass, because he's gonna be here tonight. So, Colby is a resident of twenty-two eighty-six Idvill York Springs Road, within Bermudian School District. He is also co-owner, co-owner of the Clubhouse Athletics, which is a Dinn North Training Facility in Abbotstown, as well as co-founder of the Clubhouse Braves Organization. The organization has seen tremendous growth over the first four years from one team in two thousand twenty-two to six in twenty-twenty-five. We have seventy players to give an opportunity to play this sport. These kids are dedicated and passionate about, many of which reside in the school district. The growth of the program has been great, but with our growth comes many challenges as well, none greater than field availability in the area. It is truly a problem not only for our organization, but many other organizations as well across Adams County. The proposed fields are very much needed, a missing piece of baseball and softball players in our area. Complex like this will not only allow us to continue to develop our player skills, but will allow us to continue to broaden the discipline and character, which is of value to their future endeavors within the community. The installation of these fields would ease the burden of travel for many families within our organization, especially those with multiple children that play in multiple levels in our organization. A complex will give parents, grandparents a great cramped, grandparents and plenty of relatives the opportunity to come and see the kids play. Often we're forced to travel several hours away to find a complex to play, and sometimes it's very difficult for many family members to attend. Jay is a dedicated coach and board member within the Clubhouse Braves baseball organization. He's one of twenty-two coaches that have, we have in our program that constantly develop, devote their time to help develop the youth in our community. The installation of these fields will allow our organization to continue to develop our youth and nurture an environment of discipline, character development for all the players. I ask you all strongly to consider approving the proposal for the installation of these fields as it would benefit the youth in our area and help resolve the issue of our field availability for baseball and softball. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Harley, it's eight twenty-one South Ridge Road, York Springs Playground Center. Um, I'm just, and, or I'd like to know who's gonna pay for when the road falls apart, South Ridge Road? I mean, they can't take what's on it now. If we have, um, an event there and get thirty, thirty-five horse trailers or something like that, just our entrance takes the. And then, what's, what's gonna be, I think, what's gonna be needed? You make his land commercial slash industrial. Well, South Ridge Road respects there, the road doesn't need to get used, so whether he sells his piece of property or whatever happens, later somebody comes back and they say, well, this road needs to be brought up to spec. You know, I've got this commercial industrial piece of a hundred and four acres of commercial industrial property that I need to be able to get fifty trucks in and out a day. This road won't pick it, so who, who pays for that? You know, where, where does that come from? And then on top of it, all of us guys think we're gonna lose our ditch. I'm gonna lose thousand, eight hundred feet of fence, you know, and so on like that, like it's going to affect South Ridge Road. Not picking on Jay, just that if I like South Ridge Road.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Cody Lear, eighteen forty-seven Cranberry Road. I don't know a lot of people in here tonight, but I've been attending pretty much every meeting for about fifteen years. Been involved in township. Mr. Miller attempted to do a similar thing and has fought years, this township, to try and do that. Years, and they have done nothing but go against him at every turn. So I understand, Mrs. Weaver, your, your frustration. I do agree that we should have these things around here somewhere, okay? Whether it's the Millers or yourself, but these people here started this process many years ago and invested many, many, many thousands of dollars to do this, and were fought tooth and nail against each and every turn. And I would find it, uh, a little odd if the board were to say, okay, we're gonna let these people do it, but go against, uh, the Millers. I'm not saying we need two ball fields right beside each other. I understand the road concerns, but it's all along Route fifteen, that's the only spot. See that map up there in blue? That's all that's left for a commercial. So, at some point, I would hope the board would quit the games and allow somebody to do something. Because if it was for farming, it had been done, no questions asked. That's all I got, sir.
Sir?
One more quick, Harley, eight twenty-one South Ridge Road. One more comment about South Ridge Road. We almost lost that entrance to get on our off fifteen right there when they reworked the road, but then it just made towards where we left turn. So like, just for, it changed, people that were coming to our place, like with the truck and trailer. If we had forty-five horses there during an event, six of them would still go north, but four of them would have to go south, go out past Warham's Mill, that bed turned down there at the end or something like that. So it thoroughly upset not just the neighborhood, but just pretty much everything. And people quit coming to, some of it had to do with COVID and things changed, but they shut down, you know, they talked about, they closed Lenz, you know, they shut down C R's basically, you know, did his business in by flipping the marker across through there. So if they decide to do that, or like the one guy, when he was standing there from Penn Dock or wherever, he's like, well, we're, we're one step away from closing this road, you know, getting on fifteen at all.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public? Yes?
My name is John King. I don't know about all the, the auction and the roads and stuff, but speaking on the kids' behalf, I had two boys that started sports early on and, uh, they started five years old and took it all the way through college, uh, playing sports. I know, I look back now and look what it did for them, for, uh, communication skills, for everything. I am all for sports in the area, but I'm not, don't have much, I own property along South Ridge Road also. At one time I thought everything west of South Ridge was, um, commercial, but, uh, I guess it didn't all go through. I'm just speaking on behalf of children, what it did for my two boys in sports. I think it's a good thing to have in the area, not real fond of the traffic, but look at the, the kids that are going to do that ball field, they are our future leaders. And the more we can incentivize them in sports and so forth, I look back on what it did to my two boys that were in it from five to twenty-three, twenty-four years. And it did a, a lot more than I anticipated, looking back now. Thank you.
Okay. First, first item on the agenda, resolution of ending recording policy. Basically, at last meeting we adopted a recording policy and since that time, township received emails, uh, phone calls. Mr. King received phone calls, uh, using language that I'm not gonna say here publicly accusing the township of, uh, certain things, threatening litigation. So, uh, saying we violated the First Amendment, their First Amendment rights. I'm not gonna debate that, I'm not gonna argue with that, but I don't think it's prudent and a waste of township time to fight people that threaten us, especially from outside of here. And based on that, we are going to amend our policy to alleviate that concern, so.
Correct. Uh, it will be removing the.
H and I.
It's G, H and I from the previous policy.
When I speak, can you film me?
It will remove G, H and I from that previous policy.
This is gonna get good.
Okay. Okay. So, basically, I'll read, I'll read what they are since people seem to wanna know. No recording devices may be operated while concealed, that's G, H. No recording devices shall be permitted to record prior to the commencement of a public meeting, following the adjournment of a public meeting, during a recess of a public meeting, during a conference held pursuant to seven oh, seven oh seven B of the Sunshine Act, or during executive session of the Board of Supervisors held pursuant to seven oh eight of the Sunshine Act. I, no recording device may be used to record private conversations between audience, members, officials or others whose comments or questions are made privately and not for public consumption. So we're eliminating those three items, okay? So, you are, there are being recordings right now, so just be, be aware of that, okay? Yes?
I have a question concerning the broad language that's in, um, item B. Where it said that recording devices shall be positioned only in the location designated by the chair of the meeting, which designation shall provide reasonable access to the, to record the proceedings. That's to be very broad, it's, what if we're, someone is positioned in a spot where it's not? Okay, we provide public access to these meetings. This is purely for public service. And because of the retaliation that I've experienced over the past three years, if someone on the board gets ticked at me, they could say, well, you record from over there, and if we cannot properly actually provide a quality product, that leaves the words reasonable, reasonable access to record. That could mean from out anywhere. I'd like to know why, if that can be tightened up a bit as far as where we can record.
I think the policy says you can record, you can hold your recordings or it could be on that table, is what the policy says, so to me that's reasonable.
Because I know last month you, you talked about the table, etc. I just wanna remind the board and all the public servants here that everyone in this room owns this building. It's a part of our community. And for, um, certain people to feel that this is a plifthome here is very appalling to me. If I wanted to record from over there as a resident, I should be able to do that. And to seek approval and permission is very, very upsetting to me. I've been coming for three years. I've had to hire a civil rights attorney because of defamation by Mr. King and the secretary, and you know that. This was gonna go to federal court, so these kind of things is appalling to me. That you, you, since you took over, you have, okay, we've taken the right to no requests off. Why is that so important that that be removed? And I'm sure I'll find out when I ask who received or what kind of right to no request you've received the past month or two months.
Thank you for your opinion and comments. Okay, so.
Let me see if I have another. So you're not willing to specify exactly to tighten my language up? Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Guys, any questions on the amendment to the policy?
No.
I'll make a motion, we amend the recording policy.
Do they have public comment?
Stated by our select third seconds.
Is there gonna be public comment on this item? I'm just wondering.
There just was, sir.
Okay, well, I was, you usually would say, and now do we have any public comment? You were sort of, it's been pointing around and I didn't hear that. Did I miss that? Did he say, is there gonna be public comment?
There was public comment, I mean.
Yeah, you're pointing around, I was just wondering, usually you would announce that there's gonna be.
I raised my hand because they sometimes don't ask.
Yeah, so I, maybe I missed it, I don't know, I wasn't sure. Okay, here. Yeah, give me one second. Thank you, buddy, I appreciate it. All right.
And you are, sir?
Yeah, my name is Levi Trumble. Good evening to all the residents of Huntington Township. Uh, I perform investigative journalism out of Frederick, Maryland.
I perform investigative journalism out of Frederick, Maryland. And I was happy to hear about what was going on here from Marie, who operates Huntington Township Watch. I guess she's like a local watchdog reporter, covers the news, gives everyone, you know, the insight as to what's going on here. Now, I heard, I see that we're gonna have an amendment here and that you guys are going to move forward in amending this policy, this resolution that you guys passed, as it relates to this stifling of the First Amendment freedom of the press. Now, I heard you say a moment ago that you weren't gonna debate the issue and that there was some First Amendment things going on here. And that's definitely true, but for clarification, what he's really saying is that these guys up here got caught. So what happened was, a few weeks back, they passed a resolution which said that in this public building, which you all pay for, that during these public meetings, which are supposed to be open to the public, and Marie here is doing a wonderful thing by giving this township access to those public meetings by recording them. In Maryland, where I'm from, I believe there's actually legislation where those have to be recorded. We have communications departments for our city meetings, for our council meetings, whatever it might be. Those are recorded by the state. The jurisdiction that you're from will record them and put them online because government is supposed to be open. But it's even worse with what these guys did, because this is a public building. You have the right to record in a public building. You have the right to record a public meeting. And to adopt a resolution like this that stifled the First Amendment, particularly the free press, was out of line. And you did get pushed back, because I made a video, and that video went, I guess, semi-viral. I don't know, got maybe ten, fifteen, twenty thousand. I haven't checked, we've covered a lot of things since then. And you did get some emails, you did get some people calling. And that's why we have this issue here tonight. I checked in with the state attorney for who runs this jurisdiction. He would never prosecute anyone in the event that they were to be arrested tonight for filming. I also called your Barrick, Pennsylvania State Police. They don't plan on making any arrests. So this resolution that you guys adopted a few weeks back isn't worth the paper it was printed on. And I don't know if any of you guys are attorneys up there. I'm certainly not. But one of you guys should have known, or reasonably known, that this was not going to hold up to the scrutiny of the First Amendment, period. So here we are, they're backtracking something that they did previously because they got caught, all right? So with that, guys, you won't see me here every single week, but give your praises to Marie. Yeah, well, perhaps. But give your praises to Marie. She's doing a wonderful thing for this community. And with that, guys, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. I will, I will correct a few things you said, though.
Okay.
Our policy did not say you couldn't record during the meeting. We, we never said that you couldn't record during the meeting, except that was incorrect. We, we have always permitted recording during the meeting, okay? Marie, you've spoken several times now. What, what would you like to say then?
I wanted to say that item H on that resolution was the big... And I mentioned it at the meeting, that it was unconstitutional. And the attorney and this board couldn't care less because of who brought the message. You, you people always retaliate against me, and anything I bring up is schluckst to the side. Now, these are on YouTube. You, I told you, I believe, the last meeting, that one of the videos where accused, where the attorney accused me of wiretapping and then privately apologizing over a year ago, when had views of fifteen thousand views on a channel that has a hundred twelve thousand. So when I put these up on YouTube, it is a history for this township. And none of you appreciate it because you're a clique. And you've been running this place, as Mr. King indicated to me, three years ago. It's been run by farmers and will continue to be run by farmers for generations, long after I'm gone. And that's what kind of attitude this government here has. And that's why I started filming. When you got caught doing the Sunshine Act, and I don't care what the DA said, that you were allowed to close a road for a private, for a private auction from Mr. Geis, and claimed, oh, it wasn't an emergency. Yeah, it was an emergency for him to make money.
Thank you. So moving second.
I will second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, the next ish, the item is reserving map change request for Jay Weaver. We had a hearing last Thursday, as you are likely aware. We talked about the rezoning request, and we heard testimony. We have comments tonight, so gentlemen, you have any comments? Further comments on that? Do we have a discussion on a motion to deny or accept zoning?
Can I say something?
You can.
The, just wanna report that the planning commission did pass a motion to support the idea of rezoning one eighty South Ridge Road for Mr. Weaver.
Okay. I guess I'll speak then. I, I appreciate baseball. I played baseball, I coached basketball. Actually coached Mr. Weaver in high school for a short bit of time. That's, that's part of being in the community, you're involved in things like that. I, I think the field should be very good. I, I don't have a problem with the field, I don't have a concern. I, I think the traffic impact would be minimal. I think the stormwater, all those things could be addressed later. The concern I have is rezoning and what may happen down the road, not, not at this point in time. That's, that's my concern with the rezoning of that property.
And I'll speak too. There's a lot can be said, but when the property is rezoned, anything that was said doesn't mean anything because it's not on paper. Once it's rezoned, it's lost for agriculture forever. That's just the way it is. And pretty much can do, whoever purchases or owns the property, as long as they abide by the rules for whatever they're intend to build, it's gone. And I'm, I guess it's a farmer in me, but I still wanna preserve the farmland that we have.
Mr. Geis, is there any others? Okay. I mean, if you look, the county comments were also, they, they were concerned about the zoning because of the, what may happen, not just the ball fields. I mean, in the perfect world, I would like to have ball fields, but the rezoning is the concern I have.
Yeah, that, the ball fields, I think is a good idea. Rezoning a hundred and four acres and only using fifteen, twenty, whatever the ball fields and the parking lot take up, that's why I questioned whether or not it was an option to just rezone the ball fields. I have a problem with rezoning a hundred and four acres with no specific plans and just, you know, just to have it rezoned. I think we need to use the, the commercial property that is already zoned and not being used. We need to utilize that first.
I want to obtain a motion one way or the other.
I'll make a motion that we do not rezonate to CI District.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Further discussion? Okay, it's been moved in properly second. Deny the rezoning request. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I appreciate everybody's time and opinions on this subject. You know, we tried to listen to both sides, and we spared everybody. Again, thank you, okay? At this time, if anybody wants to leave, if they were here for that, they're welcome to leave. If you want to stay, certainly, if you want to stay. How does that work, guys? If it's just recreation and it's, and it's just, you know, it's... I can't answer that, Jay. I think we'll have to talk about what...
We can keep it agriculture and still use...
And still allow the football.
I, I don't know the details of it, but I think there is provision for that. I don't know that.
And how would we know about that? I'm gonna work up the research, I can get back to you. I don't wanna speak.
We don't know the details.
I would suggest just writing up something, sending it to Jess. Jess and I can talk and discuss it along with the engineer as well.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
So what was this about? They was, they're trying to put in a baseball field?
They're trying to rezone a hundred and four acres.
How much, a hundred acres? Wow. That's... To what? What is it now, what are they trying to rezonate to?
It's farmland now, but they're trying to rezone it and...
They wanna rezone it to what? Commercial? Are you guys for or against that?
Against.
I would imagine. I would imagine, right. This is, this is, that makes sense, yeah. I would imagine. Yeah, I probably shouldn't block this door. Look at this, this is, this is raining my whole way up here. It's raining, it's been raining for twenty-four hours straight, like it's been Frederick, man, I don't know.
It's not over yet.
No, it's not over yet. There's that one hurricane.
Debbie.
Debbie, Debbie, Debbie's dropped.
Debbie does the east coast is what it's turning out to be.
Yeah.
Not Dallas, but the east coast.
Yeah, that's for cer, that's for certain. It's getting very real.
I got a deal for you. I'll trade you up there, eight twenty-one. I'll trade you for... Sure. Yeah, that's right.
I sent you a couple of emails and...
She doesn't have a computer. I get, I got it all ready.
Approve the July eleventh Board of Supervisors meeting minutes. We've distributed the questions asked. Okay, I have none. I made a motion to prove...
Place cleared out.
Okay, July eleventh.
I'm not blocking this camera.
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bill list for August the eighth. Any questions on the bill list, guys?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the bill list?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Everybody in the hall, don't talk. Okay, thank you. Financial report for August eighth. Pulling it up, guys.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, there we have the financial report for August eighth, two thousand twenty-four. In the general fund, there was receipts of thirty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. Expenditures of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-two cents. That leaves a total in the general fund of nine hundred and four thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. In the ARP, there was eighteen dollars and thirty-four cents interest received. There were no bills paid. So our balance there is two hundred sixteen thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. And state fund interest received was eleven dollars and sixty-five cents. The expenditures were three thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars and twenty-four cents. Writing a balance in the state fund of one hundred thirty-four thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty-six cents. And that leaves a balance as of today for total accounts of one million, two hundred fifty-four thousand, eight hundred, nine hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-two cents.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
That's E Howard.
Yes.
The two hundred and fifteen thousand is going to be used to purchase a truck, is that not correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and when is that purchase going to come?
Uh, it's, it's been...
The manufacture date's ten, um, October tenth.
So this, this year sometime.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roadmaster report?
Well, get a call for replacement. We did our, working on our third mowing of the year, and we're also trimming trees back from the roadway.
Thanks on it. Supervisor report? Gentlemen, have anything? Okay, guys, is that any officer?
Yes, sir. There we go. We issued an occupancy permit to Michael Pocker at five eleven Mud Run Road. He put on his new deck and patio, did the final inspection and it passed. An occupancy permit to Jolene Orfroto at three twenty-four Labor Camp Road. She put an addition on her existing home, and that was completed and passed inspection. A letter of waiver was issued to Cody Lear at eighteen forty-seven Cranberry Road. He's replacing the existing vinyl signs on his house. I issued a building permit to Bob and Barbara Evans at two ten Ficus School Road, who are installing a new generator and automatic transfer switch, which is required for a generator to their home at two ten... Yeah, Ficus School Road, that's it. Those are the only permits I issued. Aside from that, oops, I gotta go back a page. Two pages. We conducted the rezoning hearing for one eighty South Ridge Road for the Weaver family. You just heard the decision that was made here tonight. We also handled, we had a situation on Georgetown Road where the part of Georgetown Road in Homewood County was closed, and the trash company did not pick up the trash on our part of South Ridge, Georgetown Road. After some talk, conversations back and forth, the trash was picked up. And the interesting thing was, for, it wasn't picked up for three weeks, and we only had two residents complain about it. But it's all taken care of now. Let's see, what else they got here? Oh, Baltimore Road. Evidently, we've been living in a drought, but just the other day, we had some rain, and it caused a flooding problem on Baltimore Road. And it looks like it's related to these stormwater controls that are on that old middle school. We're gonna pursue looking into that, see if there's a problem with the controls that they have, if they're functioning properly, and if not, then the school will have to make a repair. That's to be continued. That's all I got at this time. There are no subdivisions or... There is one land development plan that has been submitted. It's with the county for review. It has been reviewed by ours, and it processes of being reviewed by our county, but it's here. And will be on the agenda for the planning commission this month. Deadline they had for, and presenting in the, getting the land development plan done was August, and it's August.
Thank you. Any questions? Engineer report, Scott, is anything?
Yeah, let me get it up here. Okay, the Greenbrier Road Culver replacement project, the plans and specifications are ready. They're sitting in front of you there. We'll just need the chairman and secretary to sign what I have indicated there. I need that signature back, because there's a copy of the plans and the specifications to be left here at the township for public view during normal business hours.
Okay.
And it's ready to be, to be bid later in your agenda.
Yes.
Nothing new on Myers Town Road Culver. The update to the Salvo is ongoing, we're still working with Andrew at county planning on that. And I received one plan for review for JVI group. Board action is required by November sixth.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Scott?
Hi Dave. Jesse recommended for one thirty Wyman's Mill Road. I had you come out about the runoff water situation from the two properties, one on Wyman's Mill Road right beside me and stuff. I did what you told me to do, get a bigger sub pump, which has really nothing to do with the gray water that is. All that runoff water coming in my drainage field and pushing back into my house. But I cut another swell there at the backside of my drainage field like you told me to. And I also continued to cut another ditch down through my field to get it to runoff. My question is, is, uh, is there a timeline for the other two neighbors to get their stuff done? That you proposed in that letter that you sent me.
I don't know any timeline. I, I just, there was a problem, I went and investigated it and I came up with a list of possible solutions.
Okay, because out of the three of us, I don't, I'm the only one that has done anything. The cars that are right beside me, the, the garage that they put up, their downspout is still shooting towards me and it's at the back part of the building. Which I feel like it should be moved to the front.
Right, that was, that was like my recommendation.
They had not done anything.
Okay, the township will follow up.
Can you tell me your name again?
Jesse Risenhefer, R.O. If you want to recommend us that, it's the one one.
I can spell it for you.
Okay.
I'm going to meet you, are you in school with my daughter?
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you Scott. Fire company reports, anybody from the fire company? Okay, after last month's meeting, there was concern raised by Maria Gandy about the audit. Uh, I actually contacted the next day the fire company and talked to the person responsible there. And she explained to me that the audits are every three years, but the audit each year. So the question was about the eighteen, nineteen and twenty twenty audit. Uh, that was dispersed in twenty-one, there was some minor issues that were corrected. Their funds are a little bit like our state fund, there are certain things you can, cannot use for those monies. Where they, she actually, she wrote some checks out of the wrong account because when they, she was given the bill wasn't clear, cleared. So it was easily corrected. I also talked to the auditor's office, Mike Hoover, and he explained to me that they were corrected. Uh, and at the bottom of the audit says he has sixty days to correct them, so it was taken care of within that time period. Uh, he notified, he did tell me that if there were some serious issues, we certainly as the municipality would be well informed way before. There's an issue and the payments would be cut back, so, I mean, it's not like it is imminent just because there's, there's findings, they have time to correct that. I also reviewed the Bender'sville and Heilersburg audits and there was also some minor issues there that were corrected as well, so. All those audits, York Springs will be audited again this year and we'll get the information when we get the information. Narima report?
Narima meeting will be held, I think it is next month. So there is no new.
September fourth.
Yes, September the fourth, six o'clock in the town.
Thank you.
Well, I had something to say there too. Jeb sent an email saying that the call, the, the promulgation and the plan were forwarded to the county and everything's approved the way it's supposed to be.
Thank you. Old business, the, uh, we talked about the Greenbrier Road Culver progression. We have the bid packing chair, it's been reviewed by Deb Muslin, so we're good to go there. So we just have to make an approval of the publication be opened in a order that's a September twelfth meeting.
A letter given, I'll make that motion.
Okay, it's their second.
Oh, second.
They moved in second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, discuss appointment of alternate CEO due to Terry Sheldon's retirement. Still don't have anybody.
I called down to G, to GHI and, um, they, the people that are taking that certification class isn't over, it's not over until the end of August. So we don't have anybody right now, but expect to have after that. Which is good timing because Terry's, he's in the bonus, his retirement.
New business review invitation to Adams County Brewers Association meeting on September sixteenth. They have an annual meeting, apparently we've been invited, correct?
Yes, it has to do with fire.
Thank you. Uh, discuss an approved winter maintenance agreement with PennDOT proportions of Slayball Town Road, Snyder Road and Oxford Road. We have it, we have that.
It's in the very bottom of that.
Chuck, you wanna explain a little bit?
Yeah, with, with PennDOT is doing, um, they have programs where they're getting their lack of help. And they're approaching municipalities to take over just on winter maintenance on some of their roads. So I have three roads that I'm gonna be taking over just for winter maintenance. It's consists of seven point five lane mouths. And it would be Snyder Road, Slayball Town Road and Oxford Road from Goodyear to Ithil. Which we travel over them, couple of them to get to where our roads are anyhow, so. And that's what we're gonna enter into an agreement to take over them roads.
Will we get paid?
Yes, we will.
How much?
Eighty-one hundred dollars.
Done every year or what?
That's every year with a two percent increase every year. It's a five-year, um, contract with a year renewal with a two percent raise every year. And there is a severe winter clause. If we have a severe winter, they will adjust our, adjust our payments. Anything wrong?
Does that go by, say, a state emergency to upgrade it?
To upgrade.
Emergency, a state of emergency to upgrade it, a winter storm emergency, would have to qualify for the upgrade?
They just, it's on a severe weather, depending how much snow we get. But they, they determine, um, in the, if, at the end of the year, if we have a severe winter, they will upgrade our.
Hey, yeah, it's if the, the executive makes a emergency, they, if they say it's a snow emergency, then it would kick in, is the language I read. Yep.
Alright.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, I have my question. Well, as you know, I took care of that area for sixteen years and I'm telling you right now, it's a bad idea. We proposed, they were always trying to get the township to take over the roads. Why wouldn't they? It's less responsibility for them. We, we, we never wanted to add any more work for our employees in Huntington because we have enough to do as it is. We have forty, couple miles of road to take care of ourselves. And take my word for it, you have not experienced this yet, uh, take my word for it. That area is very bad up there. It gets worse up there than anywhere in this township. And when it's blown full of snow, you're gonna be on them roads constantly because they're up in, in the hilly area with open fields. And they constantly flow and drift. So yeah, you have to drive over one of those roads to get down to the steelhouse. But it is a bad area and the township should not agree to take care of that. And another reason is, is what about your liability? Talk to your solicitor there. Because when you take over that responsibility, that is your responsibility. So if there's any accidents or any serious accidents or anything like that on there, that's liable to fall back on the township. And I think that's a, a, a bad thing for the township. It's not, it's not a money-making thing because you still have wear and tear in the equipment. You have, uh, employee expenses, you saw all your materials. Never a good idea of upsetting many, many, uh, township roadmaster roundtables and things like that. Don't do it.
Thank you. Yes.
Second that, I work for the state in the winter and that area is always on the radio for drifting and blowing and heavy snow and. Eighty-one hundred dollars is not enough. Okay.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I would like to table this till next month and check on the liability.
Okay. Table for next month after reviewing the agreement.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make that.
You can move the second to table it till next meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, subdivisions land developed, there are none.
Except for the JVI thing, which is on the agenda for the planning.
Right, yeah, but not for action. Okay. Uh, upcoming meetings, the planning commission's meeting on August the twenty-sixth at seven. Narima has stated earlier six P M at the fourth of September. And our next meeting is the twelfth of September, seven. Public comment? Yes?
Uh, Cody Lear, eighteen forty-seven Cranberry Road. I got a question about last month's meeting, that's more for clarification. On the employee promotion pay rate thing that was done. Can you explain to me what exactly was that happening? In regards to Chad Asper, he was a part-time T L driver, hired, correct?
The original time for his appointment was the meeting before, which was not on the agenda.
Okay, which would have been in May.
Yes. So it was re, instant, it was re-brought up on an agenda item at that meeting. And it was just a re-issue of what was stated the month before.
So it was missed for the May meeting.
June.
For the June meeting and then was put on the July meeting.
Correct.
And you guys made that in form of a motion then a second to appoint him the head assistant roadmaster.
Correct.
Okay. The issue I take with that is he was receiving, um, assistant roadmaster wages back in April. So I find that a little bit perplexing to me that he was paid as an assistant roadmaster in April, May, June. And we didn't find out about this until July.
If you check on the motion, that is the time it was stated in the motion that it would commence.
Right, so, so what we do then is we make decisions and then vote on them later? Or, or, or that we go, okay, we're gonna do this thing in April, but we're not gonna move on it until July. That's really essentially what happened, is about.
There must have been a motion made to appoint Chad assistant roadmaster.
Made in July.
Officially at board meeting.
That was July, correct?
It was first made, I don't know which meeting it was, it was either April or May. It was made, it was motioned and seconded at that meeting.
I can tell you that's incorrect by the recordings. Unless that was done in an executive session, I went back and watched all of them. There, there was, there was nothing in a public meeting that was voted on. I'm glad you think it's funny, Dave.
No, I don't know, I'm not saying it's funny.
But that, that's just what happened. You, you voted on making him assistant roadmaster in July eleventh, we were all here for that, no problem with that. I don't have a problem that he's made assistant roadmaster. You need the people. But you've been paying the man for the job since April and nobody in the public knew about this until July.
You can't do that without making a second of a motion in front of the public.
Why, why is that being done?
And if you decide that in executive session, it's always been, anytime I heard anybody, anytime we had any pay increases or promotions. It all had to be decided in a board meeting and voted upon and that was not done, so. It was all done in a board meeting on, on a meeting that was not on the agenda. It was brought up to us that it was not on the agenda, so it was done the next meeting.
That's incorrect because it was not put on, it was, I've watched.
You ever have to show us that, can you show us that?
Can you provide documentation of that where it's in the minutes that it was, it was brought up at the meeting? Because you're not gonna find it. I've investigated this. I already asked the questions before I was gonna open my mouth. I've checked. So even if it wasn't grossly done, why, why is that, it's not a hard thing. You wanna make him assistant roadmaster April eleventh, that's fine, the next meeting's in May. Plenty of time to have that done and brought to the public. And then on top of that.
Actually, this, the, the executive session was after that, if I recall. We did not handle this, I didn't.
Okay, so that's the case.
You had an employee, you had an employee executive session.
That was in March.
But I think the mistake was when you come out of that executive session, you didn't make a motion and a second to approve the position. I'm just guessing because it's, it's, it never was approved by the board. And that's the concern of the community that you're paying the man for the position way back there and you didn't actually put him in the position until.
You voted, you voted on July eleventh, he was paid April eleventh for assistant roadmaster position, that doesn't make sense. That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
The May ninth, two thousand four meeting minutes under the supervisor's report says Mr. Geist made a motion to move Chad Asper from a part-time employee to assistant roadmaster. Supervisor came second to the motion and it carried.
Okay, and that was in May?
Correct.
Okay, why was it being ratified in July?
For the reason.
What was the point of that?
He wasn't on the agenda in May.
Then what about June?
They did it in June.
I, I believe it was omitted from the agenda.
It still comes back to the point, he was elected April eleventh as assistant roadmaster, that's ample time to do it in May. Should have been done in May. You just started paying him without voting on it. You did vote on it as he just read, but.
Yeah, but that was after.
That was after the fact.
He's been paying for the position.
That should have been done and then he receives the pay. That's all I'm getting at.
Thank you, any other public comments? Yes?
And that was in the newspaper about it not being on the agenda, I guess that's how you found out. But tonight I also, uh, and I want this put on the record in the minutes. The resolution to amend the recording policy and zoning map change request of Jay Weaver. It's not properly said and it doesn't indicate that there would be the resolution to amend the recording devices policy and the zoning map change. They were requesting, the Weavers were requesting a zoning change for their property, not a zoning map change. So I wanna put in the record that there is a perceived sunshine act violation once again on the agenda.
I don't know what the language is in our ordinance, but the application they submitted was for a zoning map change. That's what the, the language is on the application.
Well, the public never saw the application.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, a quick point of clarification on something that we talked about earlier. The reason that people were upset online, the outrage, the backlash that you guys received as it relates to this whole recording situation is that you guys attempted to regulate something that you had no business trying to regulate. That being the recording inside of a public building. that you had no business trying to regulate, that being the recording inside of a public building. You cannot do that. Is it against the First Amendment? Yes. But even more than that, because it's a public meeting, I mean, it's, it's like you can take it from any way you want to. Public meeting, public building, like you can square this thing any way you want to. But the bottom line is, is that was where the outrage was coming from. Just to clarify.
Thank you for your opinion.
Thank you. It's not in the First Amendment. Check it out sometime. Public building. That sound like an opinion to anyone? That's a fact.
No, and one of the things is, I want you to know that when there's backlash, it's because it's on YouTube and our videos are fair use. Anyone can take our videos and show it on their, on their channels. And that's why the gentleman in Florida showed the accused one where he accused me when my camera was up on that table accused me that, because I didn't mention that I was recording, that it's wiretapping. I find it horrendous that an attorney doesn't know the difference between wiretapping and doing a public meeting. So I'll suggest, perhaps you want to go on the Pennsylvania Open Records YouTube channel and watch some of the webinars, like I do.
What I don't understand, if we're just giving our opinion tonight, why is it being amended? I don't know. Why not just leave it how it is?
Thank you, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments?
You know you can't do it.
Just remind, what did you, when did you say that was in the minutes about the, which, which date?
May, May 9th, 2024, under, under supervisor.
Supervisor's report, and that was in the supervisor's meeting.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay. I'll make a motion for adjournment. Is there a second? All in favor say aye. Opposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I think that's definitely, I just heard what. Well, that is because of that, because he was very, very, he was having sports complex. They gave him the harassment, whether to, they, they worked and, and finally they.
Is that how it's called?
He was in their cell, they wanted to. He trusted us for Saturday.
I reached out.
He's got land. We're still recording, this will be on.
What?
Just, just.
Yeah, I saw you.
Not necessarily. Yeah, right. It is unfortunate. Yeah, it's unfortunate that that, this is the way it happened.
Well, he is.
What do you think?
Amazing.
Yeah, I just got it.
We all do how we work. We look all the way down the side. What do you think? Hurricane could have got you. Pat, you need to sleep.
It's very, very, it's very noticeable that they don't listen to me.
He and I said, why didn't you change it? Why'd you change it?
It was a work for a while.
Were you on the rails?
Yeah. Yeah. I was up in a, up in a hell of a day.
Oh, the yard.
In the yard, my old style.
Amazing, there we go.
Right, right, right. I had to take my youngest away. And then I'm driving all around.
Wow, hey, don't worry about it. I'm waiting to see his, like, comedy editing going together. You know what? Do what you want to do. Edit it the way you want to edit. I'm sure that when I'm talking, you'll have me in there. And just do what you want to.
Seven to her.
I think.
I'm sure you edited just fine with the multi cam thing. And if there's anything I need specifically, I'll get you.
Do you want to come up to the hospital?
Yeah.
Either one of our pizzas.
Please. Yeah, absolutely. Do me a favor. Can you hold this? I should do an introduction real quick. Yeah. Ready?
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. Wait you do it.
Maybe I'm doing it.
I'm sure.
Ready? All right, let me know when you're ready. Am I, am I in focus? Yes? Here. I'll stand about right here. Ready? Good. Yes? All right, guys, what's happening? Levi Trumble reporting in Huntington Township, Pennsylvania. We brought you a story just about a week ago about a jurisdiction that actually tried to pass a resolution as it relates to recording inside of a public building after they recessed. Well, this building just recessed and we are still recording. So funny enough, we made a video about the fact that they passed that. We called it an unlawful resolution. And then surprise, surprise, tonight, here we are, we show up to criticize, and guess what's on the agenda? They are going to withdraw that unlawful resolution. And they did that tonight. They actually withdrew that whole thing and now people, there is no policy, you know, that policy doesn't mean anything, but there's no policy here in Huntington Township, Pennsylvania, Adams County, that now is going to restrict, quote unquote, restrict the First Amendment, that being the freedom of the press. So they passed an unlawful resolution. They withdrew it this week. They basically look horrible. We testified, it gave some public comment as it relates to this situation tonight. So with that, guys, Levi Trumble reporting from Huntington Township, Pennsylvania, Adams County specifically. We'll catch you guys soon. All right, thank you. I'll take that back. I'm not going to stop recording until I get out of here. I'm proving a point tonight. All right, so yes, we can pizza, your place, whatever you want to do. I will, I'll follow you. How about that? I'll get in my car and I'll follow you. Does that sound good? It is definitely raining, yes.
Oh my God. I'm so, I can't believe I got so angry.
Yeah.
Do you want me to pull it up there?
No, just pop the bag.